Please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great and just as one.
Please roll call please. Councilmember Barretti.
Hello.
Mr. Macao.
That's it.
Councilmember Dakmask.
Here.
Mr. Fudruski.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Seago.
Hello.
And we've had a request from Danielle to excuse her from tonight's meeting. I need a motion to excuse her. So, hold.
Say it.
Hold the bear, say aye.
Aye.
Steve, does the agenda require any adjustment?
Mayor, there's no change for the seat.
All right, the next item, five is approval of the minutes of the May 20th regular meeting on pages three to pages eight. Please review and everything is in order. I need a motion to accept.
Move.
Any further questions or adjustments? Not all of the favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Item six, we're accepting in the public domain, different boards, committees, and commission minutes. Need a motion to accept.
Move. Say it.
Hold the bear, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment? Do you have any public comment?
No.
Okay. Next item, we're welcoming Paul Minterbox, who's our representative on the Rose Point Library Board. Paul, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Well, there we go.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Paul Rettback, as said, Mayor. Decated, I'm the representative on the Rose Point Public Library Board. I'm going to give you a brief highlight of our year in review. Things that have happened since I took office last July. First of all, there's a couple of good good items that have happened. First, when you receive the bequest from one of our longtime patrons, Vivian McDonald, for a scholarship endowment for a student at Wayne State University. She left us a $156,000 bequest. This is our first year of having a Wayne State intern. The young man is just finishing up his internship. And that's been a very, very good experience for both him and us. Secondly, as you may have noticed, the Central Library was very much renovated over the last two years. And it won the AIA Award, the Architects won an AIA Award for the for the structure and let's see. The central addition expanded the children's area, added a drive-up window and an elevator, and also a new fire suppression system. It brightened up the whole atmosphere of the place. Very nice now. Another development that's happened this year is the increased website accessibility. Recite Me Assistive Technology is a device that can be used on your computer to read the website aloud to you for those who have difficulty. And Jessica Kaiser, our director is here with me. She can answer questions about that better than I can. So that is something that helps patrons enable the library to increase and enhance their access to services. During the year, we serviced over 257,000 patrons. That's over 700,000 circulated items, 300,000 ebook, audiobook, movie downloads, and 355,000 over 350,000 website visits. 400,000 logins to our wifi. And an interesting statistic is that there are more library cards issued to residents of Rose Point shores than there are households in the shores, which means that many households have more than one library. It's very, very heavily used, particularly Woods Branch. This year, we had a summer reading program. So over 2,000 summer reading students participating. And then oh, you know, during the month of November, we devoted a number of programs, speaker programs, and events to dinosaurs, which is a very big deal for young kids. We had a young woman, Jessica Nabango, who has written a book about her travels around the world. She attended and made a speech to us and was written up in the Free Press. We had a library card signup month last September. It signed up over 500 new library cards, everything about 175 a month. So the community is still very, very active in participating with the library. In addition to that, we had two actually, three programs of visiting authors came to speak to us. One in May of 2024, which was held at the War Memorial. Their offices were up there, Bonnie Campbell and Brendan Slocum. One in the fall, in October, at the Ford House, authors to the point, which had over hundreds of people attending. And then one just last May, again at the Ford House, which was another very popular event. These events sell out within like 20 minutes or so. So very, very good to have a lunch or breakfast program that goes with it. We'd like to have you come by and see the branch libraries and the Central Library. Each branch has a dedicated children's area, fireplace to sit around, and also a quiet area for study and reading. And each branch also has a dedicated outdoor space for relaxing and meeting friends. The Woods Branch also has a market space, which is a computer-assisted graphic design program. There is renovations done at both branch libraries in addition to the Central Library this year. Couple of challenges facing us. We learned earlier in the fall that the Wayne County Treasurer's Office had sort of botched up the distribution of monies that are owed to libraries through penal fines. I don't know if any of you realize this, but the Michigan Constitution provides that monies collected through municipalities and counties for penalties such as speeding or parking tickets. Those fines are dedicated to libraries in the communities. They're supposed to be allocated among all the libraries. But Wayne County Treasurer's Office was understaffed for some reason for several years. Rose Point Library did not get its share of the money. And we are in a process of negotiating a settlement with Wayne County for the underpayment of about $140,000 that the library is owed. The other big challenge has been the downsizing of the federal government through Elon Musk and the Doge group. They're trying to eliminate the Institute for Museum and Library Sciences, which funds the Michigan E-Library and statewide interlibrary lending system. Without those programs, people are not able to borrow books from various libraries around the state. So that's in court right now, and it's an ongoing development. The probably take a couple, two more months to be resolved. Those are two issues that are facing library. We had a very strong financial results the last fiscal year. In the fall, we approved a five-year union contract with modest increases in wages for both the library staff and the support staff. Our revenues and our budgets are in balance, and we received an uncalled-for opinion from our independent funding firm. A five-year union contract will allow us to budget into the future much better than the past. And the modest increases each year are below the cost of living. That's, that's good. We're working on the budget for 2026 now, and we'll be extrapolating that into 2027 when our one of our millages comes due. This little pie chart showing our, one of our revenues. 92% of the revenues of the budget come from property taxes. Our two millage assessments that are imposed on residents of the farms in the Harper Woods area. One of which is a permanent millage and one of which is a renewable millage. Renewable millage runs through 2027. So we're trying to work on getting that put on the ballot for November 2026. And we'll be trying to calculate the duration of that and the amount that we're asking for. Most of the revenue money for the library goes towards salaries and benefits, about 50% of it. And the rest is, so 25% of it is debt service. And then the rest is supplies, books, and purchase services. And that's my report. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer questions. Jessica's here to backstop me on that.
Any questions for Paul or Jessica?
Don?
Hi. Well, welcome to this position of the board of the Library of Virgo College in Michigan. And not personally, I don't think, I mean, my name is Don Schroder. Wish you well with it. We're actually hosting a library event here at the Rose Point Shores, Osseous Park on Wednesday, July 2nd. We're having an event called Library in the Park. So hopefully, our residents will attend to that.
It's, it's actually Tuesday the first.
Oh, Tuesday the first.
I apologize.
Thank you, Jen.
I apologize.
It takes a village. But I do have two questions. The first question has to do with the endowment scholarship. Is that endowment scholarship limited to students pursuing library sciences? Is it open to any students?
I think it's, I believe it's open, it's dedicated to a Wayne State student who is studying library science. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And it's, the money is being managed by the Community Foundation for Southeastern Michigan, which pays us a certain percentage every year to fund the scholarship, correct?
Actually, those are two separate things.
Okay.
So we do have an endowment through the Community Foundation, but then this endowed scholarship is actually managed by Wayne State directly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. The second question had to do with unreturned books or late books. What's the policy? Is there a financial penalty for having overdue books? Or what happens to a never returned book as far as fees? And is it effective budget?
So you might have heard, a few years ago, we eliminated overdue fees. However, if the book doesn't come back within a certain amount of time and we consider it to be lost, the person is charged for the full cost of the book or item. If they bring it back and it's still in good condition, their record will be clean. But otherwise, they won't be able to continue to use their card until they reimburse us.
How much did that policy affect the budget though as far as the complete forgiveness for overdue fines? Did it make any difference? Was it around $1,000? Was it $10,000? Was it $50?
It was a fairly minimal impact. The overdue fees weren't a significant part of our revenue. And we found that it brought a lot of people back that hadn't used the library in a long time because they were embarrassed.
That makes sense.
So that, that was the idea, was to make people feel more welcome.
Fines and rentals, would that be the one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, fines and rentals was about $10,000 a year, which is minimal compared to a $7 million.
And we still do anything that we collect under that lost item would fall under that category.
Thank you very much.
Jessica, your question. Will there be more than July 2nd Library at the Park for storytelling for children?
July 1st.
For July 1st?
July 1st. Yes, we do have multiple storytimes at all three of the branches throughout the year. And all of them.
Especially at the park.
Oh, at the park. We just have the one at each park. The librarians rotate through all of the Rose Points. So it's usually just one per season.
Just one?
Yeah.
Because I know that was a big hit a few years ago.
Yeah, they bring the
The book bike?
The book bike there?
Yep, they bring the book bike and sometimes a button maker and a craft and set up a story walk. So we try to make it fun.
They sit in a circle and somebody dressed up maybe, you know, reads them a story from a famous children's book. Okay, good. Well, thank you for coming, Paul. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Reports by chairperson? Dale?
Oh, there's Dale.
Anything you ever want?
It's a fee I think it's your first.
Hello, everyone. Including your packet of invoices for the past month, they totaled $281,554. All routine items, there were a couple that were seasonal, Drew's Gardens for $4,600 for flower spring planting. You had American Leap Detection for $1,300, Assistant Fine and Prone with Swimming Ball. You had some internet work from Cross Communications for the parks, either wireless. And then lastly, there was a Time to Play for your Fourth of July event. There was a deposit for party rentals and so forth. In total, everything else was pretty much out of board with expectations. There is no unusual purchases or anything of the nature. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dale, the Time to Play Party, is that for, was that the East Street?
No, that's for the Fourth of July. Part of that's reimbursed over the donations.
$8,000, okay, either. Any questions for Dale?
Danielle's not here, so I need to ask some. One is on Slide 21, there was a check written up. That's the third check written to Allstate Fastenal Corporation. Says checking account. Is that for checks or what is a fastenal corporation?
Which number is it down?
The third one on the docket of checks. Does Allstate Fastenal Corporation says description?
Checking account, no. No, where are they meant for checks? Allstate Fastenal, sound familiar, Steve? Mike? No. I'll get back these.
Bye, I appreciate that. And then to begin a new recycling company visit, says on Slide 21, or there's a, the second page, says Indian Summer Recycling Waste disposal.
Yeah, that's, that's true, your grass and leaves.
Okay.
That's all.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
Sure. All right, well, thank you so much.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the check register, Brian.
I move. Good.
Further discussion? Not all of the favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Dale, financial statements?
Next is a current day report through May 31st of revenues and expenses for the key funds, the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, water and sewer fund, and marina. Everything's in line with budget expectations. Revenues for the general fund, 98% of those expected to be received have been received of $7.8 million. On the expenditure side, in the general fund, it's 85% of allotted budgeted amounts, which is in line. We still have the month of June coming. But we're on target. Every department's with its allocated budget amounts. Show a slight surplus at the end of the year with the general fund. On the major and local street funds, the total revenues and expenses in both cases, expenses exceeded revenues because of construction and street improvements. For the major street fund, $238,000 came in in revenues. We spent $250,000 in expenses, of which 150 of that was for street improvement. On the local street fund, revenues were 150. Expenses, however, were approximately 500, so a $372,000 difference. However, to date, $430,000 was spent in street and prayers and improvements like Renaud. Most improvements were throughout the entire community from a variety of vendors, suppliers. In total, next after I give this brief report, there will be a budget amendment. The only amendment required for the year will be for our major and local streets. And it's for the construction work that's been undertaken. Part of the reason is some of the work that was anticipated to be completed last fiscal year carried over to this year. And then additional funds being available. Work was expanded for a variety of improvements throughout the city. On the water and sewer fund, right now, you're on a break even basis with revenues and expenses. You have another billing cycle to come in and another one month's worth of expenses. So basically, where you're at is you're going to break even there. But what, we anticipate to break even. And on the marina, you'll note revenues were $323,000. Expenses are approximately 97. However, what that does not reflect is the principal payment on the debt payment, which is a reduced liability. In total, you'll, you'll have a surplus generated within the marina funding. You're in very good shape. So that's the monthly update on those key funds.
Dale, the miscellaneous revenues, $30,000 to the good in the general fund. Do you know what that is?
Probably donations. Steve, tell me.
Well, we have a donation category.
Oh, and part of it was, we had an employee leave and a lot of payments were made to his pension and others that were refundable back to the state because he didn't that was a chunk of it.
Also, I noticed the water sewer fund, we have a miscellaneous revenue of $40,000. Was that the way we made fun for Adam Park?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Or any other questions for Dale? If not, the budget amendment, Dale?
Budget amendment follows up on my comments relative to the major and local street fund. When you look at the sheet in front of you, at the bottom of the sheet, you'll note total street improvements that we anticipated coming into the year were $460,000 between the two funds, which we anticipate spending $750,000. There's additional invoices to come in. Asphalt control specialist is out doing work, as we speak, and they'll be wrapping up, I believe, shortly. So there will be additional invoices in addition to what has been paid to date. Coming into this year, the major and local street fund had in reserves $910,000. To account for the extra or the additional work in capital improvement projects for street res servicing and so on, we will utilize about $500,000 of that $910,000 reserves. Again, no surprises. It was anticipated. It was programmed work that was expected. Some carrying over from last year that wasn't complete. And now that the contractor's available, working up to the extent that he remains available. And so this year, you'll spend $750,000 in street repairs ballpark. Next year's budget we allocated is $550,000, which 350 probably is more than normal, what you normally shoot for, but you had the reserves, so you were jumping out of it. So with that, I would ask the mayor and council would accept that amendment. All your other budgeted items are in line with what are anticipated, original budget called for for the fiscal year.
So we don't anticipate any more budgets and amendments? Because two weeks from now, we close our fiscal year.
I mean, there's still some invoices that'll be dragging in, but we have one more payroll run. No, we're in good shape.
Okay. Well, I need a motion to approve this budget amendment.
Move.
Any further discussion of Dale or not all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just wanted to dance. Don, I went upstairs real quick and checked. So that Allstate Fastenal Corporation, that was an overpayment of a boat left returned to their checking account. Right, so that was. Thank you so much.
Okay, good. Sandra?
We didn't have a meeting in March, so there's nothing to worry about.
Okay. Public safety? Got a good ear.
Good evening. Very small, short report for you. I will start by letting you know that the Fourth of July celebration, we are satisfied as far as staff goes. Spoke to the park rangers, they have enough people signed up. We will be working, so it's Public Safety Department. And we will be borrowing a scout car, a patrol officer from Rose Point Farms, like we have passed. They'll send somebody over to do those operations. So we're ready at our end for the Fourth of July celebration. Just recapping May, some stats for you real quick in the Public Safety Department. Officers wrote 66 tickets in the month of May. It's 230 to our year-to-date. Couple of things I noticed on those stats were, we had 10 animal complaints in the month of May, or eight ordinance violations. We had three callouts to SRT, two motor vehicle accidents. So we're off to spring and summer. We're off to a typical start where it does get busy. I always think of Rose Point Shores as a summer town in the winter. It's just not, you know, obviously activities. Well, continuing, we had 16 medic runs for May, 85 year-to-date. Made two mutual aid requests for the fire department. One was a krill player, another was a vehicle fire. We beat Rose Point Woods to both of those and helped them do their job. We also had a small repair to engine four we had to have done, we had to have it developed, replaced. Real quick on the training front, our SRT officers attended the OTOA Conference in Ohio, Ohio Tactical Officers Association. They go every year, it's 40 hours. As you know, the SRT team needs additional training hours. And the one way to get those hours is to just go for the week. And so the whole team goes down there. It's actually a huge conference. They have SRT teams from all over the country attended. Not only do you get your credit hours, but when you come out, your certificates are all renewed. Like people that use flash things that they send in, like as a distraction before they enter a house. You have to be certified to use those type of things all since spring. So, so the officers came back from that. And the last thing was our department training. We had fire training in May where we did four hours of vehicle extrication. Went over EV fires, that was a topic last time I was here, whole operations. And as you might have saw, the cars parked at the MO park we reuse in the parking lot when we do vehicle extrication. So that's a real quick synopsis of May.
Chief, one of my neighbors asked whether or not they arrested the people that were pointing to unlock cars or is that over?
Well, I think the side story was the last
It was in the wood.
Vehicle we had, right? So we got a call from the complaint on Renaud that the car was broken into. They had ring video of two suspects accidenting vehicle coming up to the property and shaking the doors, the doors were open. Small items were missing, whatever they could, I think some sunglasses and some change. As we were investigating that the next day when it was discovered, our officer, our department got a phone call from Canton PD. And Canton PD was watching this suspect because he just got his tether off. They were, they were, they were tracking him by his phone. And they specifically asked, have you guys any cars stolen or cars broken into at 4:35 in the morning? We're like, yeah, according to the ring doorbell, that's when these guys were here. So I think the Canton, they have a task force that was looking at this guy and they were going to make an arrest on him. And we could piggyback our investigation off of their arrest, but we didn't arrest anybody. I'm sorry to give you the long version of that story. Got me a little excited talking about police work.
Well, good people can feel better, yeah, good.
Yeah, it's just the technology, right? The irony of all of this. So they came from Canton, right? So this crew is working the metro area. And they know that they're in one city one night, they need to be in another. And luckily, there was a task force that was following these guys. Hopefully that solves our problem too.
Good work.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? That's, thank you, chief.
That's it.
Public works? Good to drive by the pool, I can see the pool. The pool.
Yes, I have a little bit of a different update for you tonight as I'm not going to give you my normal DPW update. I'm going to talk exclusively about the pool. Everything in the DPW is going great. We're getting everything cleaned up. Really no big issues. I think the city looks great and we're just going to continue working on that until the Fourth of July. In regards to the main pool, at the end of 2024, after a few issues last year, we replaced uh, we replaced the, uh, YMCA valve, the big valve between the surge tank and the pool in August. The pool was closed with a couple of minor issues, but operationally it was working. Uh, in the off-season, we did have the intake line, uh, looked at via CCTV. Could only look at a portion of it as, uh, a good part of it actually was vertical. Uh, you can't push a camera through a vertical pole. Beginning of this, the beginning of this year, the weather caused us, um, to start preparations for the pool a little later than we would have liked, uh, due to the weather. Um, and also because Memorial Day was so late, we didn't have a whole lot of time. A few days after starting up the filtration pumps, we realized that there was a lot of air coming into the intake side of the pumps. We attempted to run the system like we had last year, but there was just too much air entering the system. Because of this, the heat was not working properly and we were having, uh, bad filtration. The first thing we did was contact Aquatic Source, you'll probably see them on our bills every once in a while. They are our professionals who help us with, uh, problems and chemicals and equipment and everything that we need for our pool. Um, we contacted them to try to help us locate the problem. Most of the intake pipes are underground and run from the surge tank to the pool and then to the pumps in the filter house. Those pipes are covered by both dirt and cement and can be anywhere from four to eight feet deep, depending on the location. Aquatic Source attempted to push air through the intake lines to see if we could hear or see the location of the issue. Unable to locate the leak, we decided to use a smoke bomb with compressed air to see if we could locate where the break was. I consulted with a smoke bomb specialist at our engineering firm HRC and with Aquatic Source. Both companies told me that it should work in theory, but neither had ever experienced, had any experience with smoke testing an intake line with compressed air. Well, it took about five minutes and we saw smoke coming through the floor around the edges of the filter house. Uh, that told us that the break was most likely under the floor inside the filter house and not outside of the filter house. Um, the pipe does move about forty, about twenty-five, thirty feet underneath the floor with two forty-fives. So in order to precisely locate the break, um, or the issue, we hired American Leak Detectors. They have extensive experience working with pools and guarantee that they can locate a break to within eighteen inches, even under concrete. They spent several hours on a Saturday doing what they do best and marked an X on the floor between the chlorine tank and the heater. After we broke through the floor and got to the pipe, we found that the break was exactly on top of the X. Uh, prior to them locating the break, I had several discussions with multiple contractors to find someone who was willing to work inside our filter house. The Monday after that, Saturday, I'm very, very thankful that Frank Giannetti, the owner-operator for Fontana Construction, was willing to do the work and started digging mostly by hand inside the filter house. He completed the repair in one day. After getting the pool up and running, we found that the system had minimal air in it. And after two days, we felt confident to close the surge tank, bypass and operate in normal mode. Everything was great, except that we had this silty film that was showing up on the bottom of the pool every day, no matter how much vacuuming we did. Again, we contacted Aquatic Source who stopped by and immediately diagnosed it. The pool required a shock treatment followed by a slow vacuum to discharge, meaning whenever we vacuumed, we pumped into the sanitary system and not through the filtration system. Two days later, everything looked great, two more days to get the chemicals leveled out and in good shape, and also to get the staffing up to speed, and we were able to open. I would like to know that during all of this, before we had the break located, we had a steel foot on one of our filters, these filters are giant. We had a foot on one of our filters collapse. I'm very thankful that we were actually in the filter house when it happened, otherwise we may not have known it. It occurred until a catastrophe very likely would have occurred. The foot collapse resulted in the filter tank being supported by the eight-inch PVC pipes that the water runs through, which would not have held forever. We were able to immediately get a support jack under the tank and I was able to get a welder on site the very next day to fabricate a new foot for the, for the filter. So it was one problem after another this year, um, major problems this year, uh, but we worked through them and sorry that we opened up late, but we are open now, I think the pool and water looks great, um, and everything is operating normally, both pools. Do you have any questions?
What a great report.
Thanks.
And I know Steve working at Concert to locate the, the specialist, because you had to look for a very unique specialist who were familiar with that kind of problem. I saw eighteen inches or more of concrete over where the, the break was myself. Again, unbelievable job, Dan?
I think this just emphasizes the urgency of, of, um, us getting a new pool system. And hopefully the effort, the efforts will come in the first soon and we can get that done, which is great. I asked you this at Parks Committee meeting this, this afternoon, and I think Steve gave an estimate. But maybe the council would like to know the estimate of costs of these repairs.
All the invoices aren't in yet, um, I, I have some of them were emergency calls out, so we obviously didn't get bids out of, but we're expecting between twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
And how much had we budgeted for repairs?
I mean, I think there's thirty in that budget, I don't, I think we'll probably go over budget in the repair portion. Uh, but some of that as well is for some equipment that needed to be replaced. So maybe though it was directly, we needed it to be able to clean the water, do some things, a portion of that is going to be for equipment. So we're probably going to be, we're okay in the park budget, so we'll be under budget for total in the park budget, maybe over a category or two, but we'll be fine.
Overall?
But certainly the city has to continue on your efforts to make this pool work. Do you mind being Mr. Handy in the, in, in the Green Acres range? A little bit of, kind of deal for you.
Yeah, that's a good analogy. Again, thanks for your attention. Are there any other questions, Mike? And, yeah, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our committee, I don't see Clyde here, uh, Dan, do you mind giving Park this word?
Yes, Jen, you want to give your take?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, I'm pleased to be here tonight to share another report. Um, since our last meeting, we did successfully open the main pool on Sunday, June eighth, and have offered open swim times every day since. And then now that school is out, we are open ten to eight thirty PM daily. Weekdays, weekends, every day, ten AM to eight thirty PM. Uh, lessons and activities began yesterday, we had good participation or have good participation in our youth swimming lessons and youth tennis, as well as adult early learning swim. Uh, water aerobics was slated to start this evening, but we have very low enrollment. Um, I plan to work on getting the word out again and attempt to help folks with rec desk registration, because we seem to think that that might be a little bit of the issue in terms of the enrollment in our water aerobics. Um, but hopefully we'll get that, um, up to some, some good numbers for the rest of the summer. Uh, we do have room in all of our programs, so if people are still looking to sign up, they can, even though those, those activities have already started. So our sharks have been in the pool since, well, they've been in the pool, not our pool, uh, but they've been in a pool since May twenty-seventh. Um, and then we're finally able to swim in our pool once it opened on the eighth. So on the ninth, they started with us. Our first dual meet is tomorrow at Rose Point Woods. I just checked the weather and my fingers are crossed that we'll be able to, to make that one happen. Uh, we have a home mini meet on Saturday, so our opening on Saturday is going to be delayed until that mini meet is done. We're aiming for noon, it might be a little bit earlier, depending on how quickly we can get through the mini meet. That's, um, with First Point Park. Um, this summer, we have three home meets, they're all in July, so on the second, the ninth and the sixteenth. So we have two away meets and then three home meets. Um, so on each of those Wednesdays, the pool will close at four for our home meets. Um, and again, we don't have anything other than the mini meet to, to impact us. We've got a lot of sharks that are excited for, uh, a new season and they were really, really pumped to be back in our own pool once we were able to hold practice there, it was really neat to be able to see. Uh, we know that the season's going to go quickly, prelims run on July twenty-first and twenty-second, finals on July twenty-third, which may seem like a long way from now, but it's going to come quickly, uh, with our banquet scheduled for Thursday, July twenty-fourth. In addition to swim team, we are looking forward to several events at the park, including the Rose Point Public Library, which again, my apologies for giving the date wrong, it is Tuesday, July first. Uh, story walk, book bike, book checkout. Of course, we have Fourth of July, um, Independence Day, a great experience planned for all of our residents. Our annual fishing derby is slated for Sunday, July twentieth, and I'm confident that Mayor Tersky will speak about that as it gets closer. And finally, August ninth is our pickleball tournament, and I'm confident that Councilman Schroeder will speak about that. Uh, before I close, I would be remiss if I didn't commend Mike Way for his efforts to get the main pool up and running. As he reported the process of fixing the main pool issues to allow us to open, we're multi-layered and required a systematic approach to getting everything righted. He is a true problem solver and I feel very fortunate that he leads our Department of Public Works. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has and I look forward to sharing more in July. Yes!
Um, Jen, a couple of, since I'm part of the shark.
Yes!
I just got a text saying both of them are now at the park right now, screwing around, so. It's open light, it's on.
It's so nice.
Some of the folks, uh, and I don't know if this is directed for you, but the, the calendar for shark practices and things like that, it's been not accurate on the website as it was reported to me. I don't know if.
That we can solve, I mean, we, we tend to operate like within the sharks community and share out that information. Um, and I thought Colleen was in touch with, with village offices, but I will make sure that we're including them in all of the.
And I know for the shark participants, we get emails.
Yeah.
It was also listed on the website, a couple of people had mentioned, hey, there's a disconnect.
Okay. We'll make sure that we connect them.
Um, and can you, um, a couple of folks, uh, were inquiring about the reservation service for events at the park.
For rec desk?
Rec desk, I think we had a little slower start with that. Can you expound on that at all? Is it, is it, do we feel like it's up and running the way it should or we work it and it's okay?
Uh, it is up and running, it is a new system, so like with everything, it requires a little bit of, um, patience and thoughtfulness and, and making sure that everybody understands. I, I think Steve and I were talking about this earlier, I think part of the issue is that people aren't registering for rec desk and then they're saying they can't do things that they can't do until they register for rec desk. So we were actually talking about maybe running like a, like an open house or, I mean, I'll sit with the computer and help people to be able to create their logins and help register them. It really is, once you get into it, it's pretty straightforward and intuitive. There's a couple of things on the backend of it that we don't, I don't know, we don't love, but it is what it is, it's a program. But the user interface of it is pretty clear and it's really nice for the financial piece. Everything is done through there, so we're not dealing with handwritten receipts and where did the money go? Yeah, and like, what is this money for? And I've got a check that's written that it just says Village Rose Point Shores, I don't know what it's for, yeah, so.
So for pickleball, you can register for a reserve, but you cannot cancel, except feels a, so it, it will always be?
From what I gather, yes.
But you can cancel by calling eight eight one six five six five.
Yes, but not at like four five in the morning when you're like, I'm too tired to get up and play, whatever time, right?
Leave a message and then it will cancel it when we get to it, but the weekend.
But we have found that that is, that is true and we can't change the timing of when it opens for reservations, so.
Do we do reserve, the reserving process, is it done only online or do people still call the city hall?
Most people are starting to do it online and we're, we're helping them. So if they come in to do a reservation for the park, we, we take them right there, get them logged in, get them registered, show them how to use it, but then we do the reservation for them if they come in. But once you register, like I said, it's, it's, it's so much easier now, you can go book a, your Marina, you can book your spa. Anything that's open, everything, anything that's open, you can do all your lessons and pay for them, all that, so.
Yeah.
It's just going to take.
I think a year from now, it's going to be like, this is just, I mean, this is what we're doing, but this first summer pushes.
Push people the right way.
You can push them to me.
Sure.
Uh, you can push them to the website, although you might still just want to push them to me and we will get them, we will get them logged in.
Okay.
Or court.
Or court, yes, court is wonderful.
Any more questions for Jen? Wonderful report, Phil, Jen. Dan?
Well, we had our Parks Committee today, which I'm happy to report was at the venue, which is very nice outdoors. And I've been very excited, also four days from now, it's going to be the official first day of summer, so here we go. We finally had the cold weather behind us and warm weather is coming, right? Uh, I also want to officially thank the, the city of St. Clair Shores. Uh, Jen mentioned that the swimmers were in the water, we didn't have a pool, uh, and she kept it to the, her colleagues at St. Clair Shores and named out the swimmer system there. So maybe Mayor, Mayor Better thanks or, uh, uh, City Manager would go along thinking in that regard. Uh, so some things discussed today at the meeting. Uh, the gas mitigation, I think mostly been at the park, I've noticed a big improvement in the, um, the cleanliness of the park due to less geese in the park. We still have like ten geese who are probably born here in the park who are refractory to, to leaving permanently. But I think that, uh, that the efforts by, by all the efforts made, the combined efforts through the VNR and through the lights and through the, through the rangers, uh, with the green lasers and also through the canine patrol. Thank goodness for Trace and Fran Bachmann, they've done an excellent job, three days, three times a day patrolling the park, have made a significant difference in the cleanliness of the park, uh, due to, to geese, so thank you for that, things are working. Um, a couple of months, actually last fall, um, there was some concern about, uh, some, uh, potential danger on the most narrow part of the main pier that goes out on the lake that runs, uh, from, um, west to east going into the lake, uh, for fishing, because it's, it's narrow initially and the victim's wider. Apparently the best fishing in our harbor is in that, or out in the lake from our harbor, is in that part portion that's narrow. According to the fishermen, they came and, and, uh, made that known to us at the Parks Committee. Because we had ruled that, uh, set up a rule that there was going to be no fishing in that narrow area. So if we have to get a mule through or some type of car, someone has a heart attack, uh, we can get that through, uh, fishing, like in not having to danger anyone. So we put signs out last fall and, uh, there've been some, some concerns about that. And so people are suggesting maybe an alternative site for fishing. So we even talked about maybe adding a, a pad, uh, where the, the rocks, the crushed rocks are, they're just in front of that, that old ladder that jumps into the lake at the very base of the pool. Um, and it's could, probably a lot more costly than we first guessed it might be. We're still getting estimates on that right now. And, uh, so I'm not certain it's worth the cost of that, you know, people decide that as a council once a year, uh, from our, our, our city manager about what that estimate will be. Um, but nonetheless, we have that, 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 those signposts now for safety and we're having some issues with compliance, I have to say. Um, we've had complaints from, uh, some people who tried to, um, enforce the compliance and, and it's sometimes tough with, uh, teenagers. And if, if any parents are here, they know that teenagers can be challenging it sometimes with, with, uh, with conforming. So, um, uh, hopefully the joint efforts will help that and, and perhaps, uh, you know, having an alternative site can do it. Uh, but otherwise we may just have to live with non-compliance and, and, um, if an emergency happens, hopefully people will, will get it all the way quickly and make it happen. But our, our goal certainly was to have that as a, as a no fishing zone and that's still our goal now and just hopefully it can be enforced and respected. Um, let's see, I don't want to listen to the area, you mentioned that already, you mentioned that, oh, the concession stand. So the concession stand, um, one of residents in the Parks Committee had some really great ideas about increasing the the variety of the quality of food and drinks at the concession stand and perhaps even the hours. Right now it's open Friday, Saturday and Sunday only. Uh, we're looking into opening it on a regular basis, perhaps eleven to two on, on weekdays, but staffing is still an issue. So our city manager is negotiating with Full Circle right now to try and see if that's possible. We're even looking at, at hiring a different source, uh, maybe some, some, um, some younger people that are not involved in Full Circle to manage it during the weekdays. And probably it's not going to be a, a entire summer event, the times that are probably most, uh, important are now as swim teams in, in, in full swing. So maybe the end of July, in August it tends to, uh, die down as people go away on family vacations. So even that isn't necessary, but we've also expanded the menu, they have, um, things like chicken nuggets now, bacon cheese, fresh fruit, uh, Gatorade, um, uh, pizza that's fried in different companies, popcorn. So, um, hopefully this will give the, the residents, um, more variety and more intrigue to actually come and use the concession stand, which will be beneficial, because if it's not used, obviously there's no point in having a concession stand. So I think you'll see the improvements as you visit and encourage you to, um, to, uh, spend some money there. Uh, we did have a, um, a tennis tournament this last Saturday and, uh, we had a very good turnout, actually. We had nine teams sign up, rec desk, that's a turnout, rec desk, I had a little, little flaw through it and it was really eight teams, but, uh, two people had signed up in the same individually, not, it was no way for me to know that they were not a team. That's one of the flaws of rec desk. But nonetheless, uh, it was a very good turnout, um, had a great. Um, we had a great tournament and, uh, a previous champion actually won with a different partner, the silly, the Silas. Won the tournament with his new partner, uh, Andrew Sturico. Uh, they played excellent tennis. There were some, the mayor was there in attendance and that actually surprised the, the championship trophy, a presentation last championship match. But he'll attest to the quality of the play was really thought down. Uh, some of the players had been state champions, uh, for their high school teams for multiple years. And so it was really quite, uh, an impressive competition we had this year. More in rapid sports. Uh, we had a request and a computer request from the certainly, um, the, the rising interest in pickleball. We have two courts currently. And we have four tennis courts. Oftentimes the tennis courts are not full and the pickleball courts are usually full all the time. So other, um, other of the points have converted some of the tennis courts into pickleball courts and, um, that's somewhat expensive and it's maybe a little bit less expensive to do something that would still work, which is to paint pickleball lines on one of our tennis courts. So we talked about maybe court, the fourth court, court four of our tennis courts, which is right next to pickleball courts. Painting the lines on, so you have maybe, you know, yellow lines, so the white lines, yellow lines and two pickleball courts were placed on that tennis court, but would have dual purpose. You can play tennis on it and you can play pickleball on it. They have two temporary nets for the pickleball. They'll remove those for tennis. So it won't, uh, shouldn't upset the tennis people and it'll certainly encourage more pickleball people to, to play the sport, which is wonderful, I think. Um, and then last, what brought up at the meeting was, uh, uh, the, the Rose Point Improvement Foundation was so generous and donated to these new carts that people use to push the gear all around to boats and elsewhere. Uh, but sometimes in busy days, a lot of the carts get knocked, knocked down the piers in front of boats. And it's hard for the rangers who are trying to let people in on busy days to bring a little boat back. So we encourage the residents to not, you know, go on a five hour boat tour and leave their carts, uh, unreturned. So, uh, as people come from the event, Father's Day was an example, and there were no carts and there were twelve carts on, on the, uh, boating docks left there for five hours. So ask people to return their carts. Uh, we talked about this meeting, uh, with, with the city manager and VPW director. And, uh, there are some old carts that, uh, Mike White has in storage that we used before that were replaced that we may add to the armamentarium of these current carts to increase our, 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 uh, capacity parts. Uh, and maybe we'll get together with the Rina committee and maybe discuss some of the solutions that may help. Maybe for signage, uh, maybe some postings on a Facebook page to encourage people to return their carts from the boating docks, uh, instead of leaving them there for the course of the day. That ends this report. The, the next meeting will be in, uh, July on the same date as the council.
Good report.
One question. I actually wanted to find out, do you think there would be a problem anymore worrying some of the tennis courts to pickleball with the neighbors because of the noise?
That's a good question to ask. Again, this is a temporary thing and, uh, right now there is not a neighboring residence to make, make that concern this year at least. So by doing this as a temporary thing, it can still be used in tennis and you can always say, God, if it does become an issue, we can just make it a tennis court and not have a big expense uplay for doing it. If you go to court four, for instance, that's how they set up their, their pickleball courts indoors for the winter is, well, summer or winter. And they just have lines taped, the yellow lines on the, you know, white, over the white lines of the tennis courts and it works very well. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Don. A good report. John Harbor report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we now have eight available wells. Number nine just, uh, was signed up and just waiting for payment for that one.
In all size categories or?
Yes, varies more of the bigger ones. So with that being said, uh, yeah, Redder and I might be taking a walk around the docks and see who's in compliance or not compliance with their vessels. If they're too big, we're gonna see if they can shuffle. And then might have some smaller ones for people. And also a little bit of security concern that will be eliminated. So you won't be in fairways or over the, the docks. Uh, again, if you're a voter, please make sure that you're using a V H F nine for the swing bridge or phone six four zero seven thousand is Larry's last resort. Uh, as you know, the Fourth of July party is coming up. If you have a guest that's coming in by boat, they wanted to open in advance and talk to the harbor master to make sure that they're not going to slide into a well that somebody is using it today and they come back and their well is taken. But also being said, do not tie up to the end of the pier because now you're in a fairway and that is a safety violation. And I was going to ask the chief, maybe if they could have somebody check on that because last year a couple of people did tie up and got a little tight in the main fairways. That's all I am saying.
Any questions for John? So nine wells and all eight wells. Good. So wait for you to get your vote in. Thanks, John. You're welcome. Any questions, Dr. Bob?
Yeah, we did have a meeting and we discussed a couple of things and the major thing is the major road repairs of, uh, PPW haven't done concrete. I know my street, that street is falling apart. They fixed all the major parts. They can't do it all, but so get all major stuff. That's all I have. It's for meeting we have.
I know this isn't our city, but at Seven Mile and Lake Shore, Seven Jefferson, there's an area now that's under construction to the seawall. Do you know what they're doing?
They're separating the sewers. That's part of it. Some of the other stuff, I don't know what they're, what they're doing. They expanded that.
Oh, looks like they're rebuilding the seawall. I mean.
Yeah, it's part of their, it's part of their $50 million sewer separation project.
Oh.
Uh, so that's going to be the outfall. Uh, so I think it's a 64 inch pipe going on outfalls. It gets reduced to a 48. This runs all the way down to I think Shell font where Rose My Park bought that bacon lat on the corner of Shell font and, uh, it's next to the golf course there. I think that's where the palm station is going to go. So it's a multi-year project, uh, but they should be off of Lake Shore by the end of July and just moving west.
But you really have a good luck of the seawall. I mean, yeah, it looks like they're flooding another, you know, wall next to other and supporting. Okay. Good. Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Bob. Improvement Foundation, um, Rob?
Good evening, Mayor, Village Council.
Thank you for the new cart. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Maybe we need more. Um, at our last meeting, um, on the, uh, the 19th of, uh, May, we approved the funds to redo the sea scapes and, uh, we got, uh, Tocco Menino going on the 27th uh, of May. And, uh, so they've, uh, got the ball rolling, working with our landscape architect, seeing that they can get the plants that have been specified to go in all the gardens. Everything's being staged at the Tocco Menino facilities. And so they'll probably within the next couple of weeks be ripping into bands. But right now some plants maybe aren't available. They're looking at getting substitutions with the, uh, landscape architect and, uh, so when everything's straightened out, we have the plants, have all the materials, we're going to rip into those gardens and, and get them refinished. So we're kind of excited to, uh, see that. And you know, Brett Marshall, he is all, all over this and keeping an eye and, and going to coordinate and be there probably every day. So that should be a great project. Um, last week we had a, uh, meeting of the, uh, investment committee for, uh, the, the foundation and about five people with Azimuth Capital Management. It was a, you know, a very good, very interesting meeting. I kind of poke my nose in to see what was going on. And, uh, two point one million dollar endowment, uh, is doing well. Nice combination, good diversity of, uh, securities and fixed income. And it's a very conservative and stable and it's giving us funds to, uh, continue to do things, which is, uh, really exciting.
They've done that on a pro bono basis for how many years?
Well, yeah, a part of it. Yeah, part of it. And, and, you know, there's been, you know, the, uh, the fund managers over here, you know, doing some things and, uh, you know, there's three different parties that were involved. But now it's all in their hands and yes, they're getting compensated for what they're doing. So it's screwed up. Um, the pool, uh, project, we're still in the, in the quiet phase and I'll let, uh, Sandra and Steve, you know, uh, mention something about that, but um, I'd say that it's, uh, we're targeting October for the, uh, the Heidi and Fran, uh, show to put together, uh, some kind of a fundraiser and we may have, uh, some other smaller events during the summers, get togethers and, you know, some targeted, uh, you know, presentations for, you know, individuals who can really help us out financially. So the foundation is helping to raise funds, you know, for this project. Um, our next meeting is, uh, 21st of, uh, July. And then it's going to get kind of quiet. Our next meeting after that is September. So, uh, that's what I have. Any questions?
Any questions, Rob? Thank you, Rob.
Hey, thank you.
Well, we contacted, uh, we met and we sent it, uh, a project petition to another donor and we're continuing to reach out to other, uh, uh, major donors. Uh, it's going a little slower than we anticipated, but we're going to get there. Uh, we're going to try to do one a week if possible for the next month or so, so that we can go ahead and meet the date for then, uh, for them to go ahead and do the the larger, uh, base of donors. Um, but besides that, that's, it's just a slow process so far.
Slow but steady.
Yes. And I know that one donation came in and I'll let Steve elaborate on that.
Okay.
Or maybe not.
I think that was a donation towards pool.
Yes.
But it wasn't the, you know, the big one. No.
Hey, we'll take it.
Big donation to the foundation.
Uh, next item is communications. Ted's not here, Danielle, so, um, unless there's anything to add, we'll move to people report. Courtney?
Hi, everyone. I hope everybody's doing well. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
It's a pleasure to see you all again. Uh, just a brief update provided by Ryan. Uh, it looks like since the date of the last, the council member held on May 20th, 2025, the city attorney has engaged in calling activities on the behalf of your city. Uh, general municipal matters, including advising cities connections with an extensive removal information act request uh, that sought out numerous, uh, city financial records and other items, uh, some spanning over the course of several years. The city responded, um, with financial records and other items. Uh, the response uh, was appealed by the requesting party. Uh, the city responded again. That's why a request was later modified by the requesting party. Further responded to by the city. Uh, the matter appears to now be, does effectively resolve through additional action on modified lawyer requests and names. Um, and we've also consulted with the city on various other procedural administrative matters. So, um, a pretty brief report, but if you have any questions, just let me know and I'll do my best to answer them or relay them to Brian for you guys.
Is there any questions? Okay.
Yeah.
Courtney, I do have one. Thank you for the report. I, I noticed in the, in the check register for this month, uh, that the Foster Swift, uh, uh, charge was more than it normally is. It was like $10,000 every week. Two bills. Okay. I was just gonna ask, was it, was it because of extensively work in the last month or is it just two consecutive months? I got the answer. Two consecutive months. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney.
I'm Courtney.
Okay, uh, managers report, Steve?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor. Just to, just to actually one item, but most of things been covered during the reports from the committees since I serve on all walls. Those really covered them all. Uh, um, this month, uh, or in the month of May, the state, uh, uh, put a audit on us on our, from the state, state tax commission of our assessor roles and, um, practices in during the audit. Uh, there were 15 items that were reviewed. Uh, state was here for some time doing that audit. Uh, at the end of the audit, based on the findings of the audit, your local unit was given a designation of substantially compliant and they congratulated us for having a perfect record. So on all 15 things, our assessor and Dale have done everything that needed to be done to the state tax commission. So I just wanted to give you a report on that. And really everything else. And that concludes my report.
Okay, uh, old business. We don't have any new business. Uh, asking you that. Steve, you wanna?
Yeah, uh, Bob, uh, sits on the Pats board and, and the smart board and, um, handles these things and, uh, it's time for the, just the normal agreement. The money is a pass through from, uh, Feds and the state to come in and then we turn, uh, transfer right over those funds to Pats and, uh, Smart. And so we just need a council approval to allow me to sign it to pass through.
I, I do have just one question about that. I thought normally it's $20,000 a year. It's 10 on this.
Dan, I thought the same thing when I looked at it tonight. So I, I've got.
It's 12. I thought it was 18 actually.
No, it's 20 grand. It's always been 20.
20 grand.
Well, it's a drop. Between meals on wheels and cats.
Yeah, well, they, they divvy it up. Between the two. And so when I looked at this tonight, I have a question for, did they change it? Because this is a new one. So I need to find out, did they change it to 10 or didn't? Or is this a typo or is this a typo on the ins part? Uh, that it should be 17,000. Not sure. This may only be, this total of 20,000. So, but this is a new one. So I'm wondering if something was cut and it's now 10. So I'll ask Lynn. But if we'll make this motion out if, yeah, I'm, this, what we have in front of us, we didn't amend it.
Subject to any clerical, is there, is there an even? Is there support?
Second.
Allos and favorites, say aye.
Aye.
May I poll? Thank you.
That just passed through anybody.
Public comment? Do we have any public comment?
There's, uh, I was gonna say Scott this year, maybe he would like to.
Um, sure.
Ready or not?
I wasn't ready, but that's fine. Thank you, Dan. Um, my name's Scott. Yeah, my name's Scott Cotten and, uh, I understand there may be a city council position open coming, coming up and, uh, I'm interested in running for city council. So I'll be talking with everybody. So that's all.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Council member comments, John?
So, Mr. Mayor, again, many, many thanks to Mike and his team for obtaining all of, of companies that were needed to get the pool up and running. We can't tell how many people are scared. I mean, can tell you how, how high I am. You know, you gotta think off the cuff sometimes and you, you certainly demonstrated that. So really, really appreciate that. Thanks. All the people that you work with. So looking forward to the Fourth of July party and we got, uh, one of the city docs coming again. It's my buddy. So when you come and share to visit this, this, uh, struck, you know, it's supposed to have a good, good feast for everybody. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, John. John, you have any comments? Uh, I just like to reiterate, you're probably going to hear this five more times. Well done. Uh, to Mike, Steve, the DPW crew, to the proper, getting the proper contractors who clearly have the expertise to handle this issue quickly and efficiently. Um, it, it was, you know, that we have a webpage, we have a Facebook page that allows our residents to comment and, um, just perusing that issue. You, you saw how important this pool is to our park, which means it's extremely important to our city. And, um, some of the comments about how can we let it happen this way? Uh, didn't we check in the fall? And I'm, and I'm being slightly facetious and I'm not picking on anybody for saying that. And I can understand if you don't appreciate the work that goes into it, you might say, well, we shut it down in the fall and now everything's broken. Didn't we check? Things happen. This is northern, uh, the northern Midwest with brutal winters and we see that time and time again. And, um, to, you know, I've been on city council for, this is my fourth year. Um, every year there's something that. My four years are probably 25 years before I was on city council and it's only going to get worse. Um, but it, it was an amazing job by everybody involved and there are so many families that are so grateful to be able to, like my wife and I, well, we didn't even drop the kids off. People came and got our kids tonight after baseball and said, we're going to the pool. Cause it's open till eight 30 every night because we have fully staffed for the first time, which is another massive accomplishment. And it, it brings back the, my memories of being 10 and 15 and 12 and eight at, you know, going to the park pretty much whenever I wanted to and doing whatever I wanted to do there because it was always. I'm looking forward to this summer. We're gonna have a fabulous Fourth of July party again. Uh, I'm looking forward to what comes, uh, to fruition in the next couple of years with the, uh, which it's going to happen. We are going to get a new facility. It will happen. Um, and I'm confident of all the efforts that are going to go on to show, uh, that we are going to make that facility, our park and our smallest of the five Rose Points, the most idyllic, rarefied city in Michigan. that facility our park and our smallest of the five Rose Points, the most idyllic, rarefied city in Michigan to come live your life. It's a phenomenal city and it's because of the efforts of our staff, our volunteers, that makes make summer a very special place, living on the Great Lakes water system. So that's all I have.
Oh, very good comment. Bob?
Just to enjoy the summer and everything that the city's got to offer. It's gonna be a great summer. Hopefully don't get a lot of rain. Yeah, not raining, take care of the grass and yeah, enjoy it. Well, the same.
Thank you, Bob. Don?
Uh, just a special shout out to some of our special volunteers, Helen Banks of the beautification city. Maybe she's made the park, as our mayor always says, the jewel of our city. And it's so spectacular what she's done. Want to thank the DPW workers for what they've done in the park too. They did a really, really great job. And also Fran Bachman and Trace, our Kine Patrol, for keeping our park clean.
Thank you, Don. Sandra?
I just want to again emphasize that we do need to double up our efforts for fundraising because the pool, I don't think it's going to last one more year. So I want to thank also the foundation for your efforts to help us do the fundraising as well. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Sandra. Well, I want to talk about the pool. The pool is almost as old as I. What, 1960, 65 years old? And I had to see the filter room, the pool of the pump station. And I looked and I saw at least 18 inches of cement that had already been pierced to find the source of the leak that was causing the pressure not to build up. And Steve had said, pray for some good luck the next day, the Saturday. And we had people there on Saturday, Mike, you were there on Saturday, probably Sunday, to check on the system. These filters that you talk about, they're, this is an Olympic sized pool. The filters are certainly much taller than I am. Each of the three filters are at least six to eight feet tall and wide, as wide as I am. But that's, that's what you're looking at. And you realize the infrastructure for the pool to keep the pool and just, you know, and it'd be one thing, we had one surprise after another. And I'm surprised actually that the bills for all this extraordinary work on the weekends and that weren't even in excess of, I thought it was going to be $50,000 to $75,000. But I thought, when I saw the work that was being done at the pumps, the pumping house, I just said, wow. But we do need a new pool this, again, hopefully we can use this segue as, as a ramp to solicit more and bigger funds too. So as I've said before, the pool and the park is the centerpiece of the city. People have memories here that they last a lifetime. They have friendships. I remember your son, Rob, I mean, he was a lifeguard, my son. I mean, these are lifelong friendships that develop at the park and that's all we got. So we, we have to maximize it. And that's what attracts the people, the younger people. Now, the tennis tournament, John's a little bit shy, he made it, he was against the defending champion from last year. It was a 3-3 tie, 3-3 tie and a couple of awkward bumps, you know, to scale. But he would have been the defending champion. He was well run. You did a very good job with the board. You had the brackets and everything. I would like to have seen a loser's bracket. Like we had two young ladies that came and they were playing some, some very good players. But I would have liked to see them have another match or something. Maybe next year we'll work on that. This Thursday is Juneteenth day and Harper Woods is sponsoring with all the other Rose Points celebration at the Mary Ellen Stempel White County Community College building. That promises to be a really nice event. As Jen said, we got five swim meets. The first two are our way and then the next three are boom, 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 our home. So that's a way to showcase, we alternate. Last year we had two home swim meets. This year we have three. And then the following week is prelims and finals. It's just great times just to come to the park. And even just to see the kids swimming, just see the energy. I just, I feel younger just going there and visiting. It's temporary. We get, the summer is promising to be a great summer. We're starting off on a good foot with the pool seemingly in good shape now. We're going to have new record boards. I think that's another thing that the Improvement Foundation is sponsored. So I've updated record boards and we're going to have the characters so that all the, I think Jen said last year, we broke more records and some of the records broken were existing for over 15 years. So again, you gotta come to the park, gotta come to see what's going on. The fishing derby is always very good. We try to spread the fishermen out. We typically have spectators up to 50 people. And it's not the fishing, the fishing area, the spot, it's one thing. But then you have two, three, four pairs, then you have two, three, four tackle boxes. And then you got landing nets and then all of a sudden it's encroaching on that area that we've talked about. That could be a dangerous area if we needed to move very quickly. So maybe I'm going to try to see if we can spread people out a little bit better. So. Well, at this point, I need a motion. Our next meeting is Tuesday, July 15.
Mayor, just one thing, I neglected, I think we need to publicly, I wanted to publicly thank Shane Reeside from Rose Point Farms and Frank Shelkey from Rose Point Woods who accommodated, making sure our residents had a place to swim or overclothes. They opened up their pool and allowed our residents to go there. So I just wanted to thank them publicly.
We could send a letter and I'll sign it. I mean, that, that just shows you the collaboration of the Rose Points. And I think Jen, you would know this. I think the lakefront swimming program is the oldest municipal program in the state of Michigan. Is that right? I, I think it goes back to the.
It sounds right.
Sixties. Does that sound right? Who would question that?
I, I will find out.
But I think, I think that's true. I mean, and I know with the clubs, the inner clubs, it's one of the oldest in the country. So I mean, we have a lot, the program, and what's nice about the swimming program, it marries really, really, really good swimmers, people that swim all year round with the private club, with average swimmers or people that just want to be part of the team. Talk about a team building exercise. And then we stand the campouts and we, I notice there's a team building.